Okay, I've got 5 o'clock. I call this special called meeting to order January 30th, 2024, 5 o'clock. Tie your heads for prayer, please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together for we make decisions for a better tomorrow for the City of Hartford and the citizens of Ohio County. Please forgive us of our many sins. Please be with us as struggling times, sorrow times. Please be with all of us and just forgive us of them sins and please keep our families safe and healthy. We love you. Amen.
Amen.
There is not here today, so we'll move on down to financial reports. After reviewed, I'll ask for a motion to accept December 2023's financial reports.
I make a motion to accept December 2023 financial reports.
Okay.
Second by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, action and old business. Chris, do you care to come up?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't do the minutes.
I did do the financials.
Did I not do the minutes?
You didn't. You went straight to financial.
I'm sorry. It's my bad. Do I have a motion to accept the special called meeting December 8th? Approved.
I make a motion to approve them.
Have a first.
Second.
Have a second by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side, motion carries. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay.
All right, Chris. This is action and old business.
Do you want to start with the origin project or...
Uh, yes. Go on and start with that one. And then the other one... No, I want you to start with the, um, country club.
Okay. Okay, with the country club, we had ordered a booster pump here almost two years ago, and we had just received it last month. We contacted Bobby Luxor and got a price on getting it installed. Where it's at, it's in a difficult place to put it because it's so close to Bob Black's property line. We'll have to extend the water line out a little bit to get on the country club side more. So there were a bit, a little bit of cost there. Then that's also them fully installing it and putting concrete pad and fixing the road to it and everything. They install the pump itself and do all the materials, labor, valves, and also install one, uh, normal sized fire hydrant. That way, there's more fire protection for all the, for the golf course or the residents in there and the rick houses. But the price to get it installed is $50,783.33. And on top of that, we have another quote from Taylor's Electric, and this is for the electrical portion of the booster pump. This includes installing all the electrical to it, wiring it up, programming it, and a transfer switch if we ever get a generator eventually. That way, if power goes out, everybody still has water pressure.
Cream paper.
And that quote is $26,326.20.
Are the residents yet there paying anything for this?
Yeah, well, I mean, the residents, uh, I mean, they're paying their water bills.
Well, I pay mine too.
So I guess...
Money like that on my ass.
And I understand, I understand your concerns behind it. How much did the county provide for us when we, when we first started this project? They, they've already...
I was gonna say 24.
So 24,000, but have they, have they contributed to that yet?
I have to check. I'll be right back.
Okay. But I know that they, the county has contributed to that, and I will say that the, the animal shelter has ongoing issues with water pressure to make sure they feed their dogs, water their dogs, I should say.
Actually, the country club road is the highest elevation in Hartford. So at the level it's at, it doesn't have sufficient water by, by gravity flow. So it needs to have the booster pump to supply it.
And that's one of these projects that I feel like it, it needs to be done. If not, we'll still have issues with this, and I feel like that they could go to county water. All them residents have that in them to go to county water if they want it to.
How many households are affected by this?
I see... There's about 15 meters altogether.
And that's including...
And that's not including the park either.
Yeah. And see, a lot of that pressure comes from the park, too. Does anybody else have any questions on this?
So all that out there is city water.
Yes.
Is that as far as our...
Yeah, as far as we go.
As farthest point that we go into city.
Yeah, that direction it is. But we want to, we also too, with adding a second, this would be the second fire hydrant we would have on this road. So we would have one at each end also. I think that would be very beneficial for fire protection and to keep the chlorine and keep the water lines flush more.
There's a small fire I dream right up from Black's there.
Yes.
Well, there's one right there by the rick houses.
In, in the bushes there.
Yeah, it, it's just a blow off. It's just to bleed, to bleed the system there.
Oh, okay.
That line there, that's actually not considered big enough to be fire protection.
So the rick houses are included in this?
Yep. Do I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion, we accept.
And, and with, with that emotion, I request to see if we can take that out of occupational tax if everybody's okay with that. Have a first and second? Mary Bell, or no, I'm sorry, Jerry did.
You call me that again, I'm...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Lucky you.
Uh, David Coleman did. I have a first and second to approve this project for the booster station. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. I'll be hollering back at you in a little bit. Okay.
And this comes out of occupation tax?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
What is... Huh? Please give police report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't tell you about the police report because Chief York had a, his mother's in the hospital, so he said, he sends his condolences there for not being here, but he'll be here next month. And he's, he's doing good things for us. Lisa, do you want to explain the financial disclosure?
Yeah, the first of every year, it asks for all officers. It's part of our officer employee ethics, and you all have done this before. It's, and it's not really asking for numbers. It's your sources of your personal income. It ensures the city is not entering into obligations with like, say, your personal business or something like that. So we have to have this on file by March 1st. So it's in your pocket. It's called Officer Employee Ethics. So as long as I have that by by March 1st, we're good.
It's in our package?
Yes.
Next to the last page.
Are you looking at a little research of what exactly? Are you looking like we have full time jobs? You need this one there or...
Yeah, oh, like, let's say you're Mary Bell and you're retarded and you have social security income and maybe you have, I'm talking retarded income or what, if that was your income, then you would list that on like source of income number five. If you had a business, you'd put that on number six. And like, again, it's like, for example, if you were at Jordan Street that is leaving the bed on the cemetery, you happen to be your son, something like that. That way, they've got as far as ethics that we're doing what the city should do.
All right, thank you. It's that time of the year again, we, we gotta set our board members. I've got four different boards to go through, and I'm going to ask for a motion to approve these people on each board. So I'll start with the first one, and I'll need a motion to accept these board members. The first one is Planning and Zoning Board. Karen Ward for a four-year term. Willa Puckett for a four-year term, and that'll end January 2028. I'll need a motion to accept these board members.
Make a motion to accept these two for planning and zoning.
Second.
Have a first and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side, motion carries. The second one is the Code Enforcement Board. I have Paul Stratton for a one-year term and Janet Coulter for a three-year term.
Who?
Janet Coulter.
This is for what?
Code enforcement.
2231.
Huh?
Retired teacher.
Retired teacher from Wayland Elementary there.
Are these people just folks that put their name in the hat for these positions?
No.
They've, they've already held the position.
They've held them before and they've accepted.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept.
A second.
First and second. Jerry and Stacey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side. The third one is the Planning and Zoning Board Adjustments. Robert Ayers for a four-year term. Billy Wood, four-year term. Christie York for a four-year term. And I'll need a motion to accept those for Planning and Zoning Board Adjustments.
I make a motion, we accept.
Robert Ayers. Billy Wood and Christie York.
Jerry made a motion, I'll say it.
I'm sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side, motion carries. The fourth one is Ethics Board. First one is Jerry Bevel for a four-year term. Judy Moore for a four-year term. Keith Bennett for a four-year term. And I'll ask for a motion to accept them, board members for the Ethics Board.
I make a motion, we accept.
Have a first.
Second.
Second by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side. Thank you. All right. So this is, uh, now we're down to the Community Coordinator Contract. This is something that we've been asked to do through the KLC, and basically it, it's a signed contract of labor for the code enforcement, or, um, lost, community, okay, community coordinator, I'm sorry. And this is something that's requested every year, so... No, nothing has changed in that either, so...
So we need a motion to continue our contract labor for that position?
Yes.
I make a motion to continue contract labor for community coordinator position.
Have a first. Second by Jerry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side, motion carries. On that same topic, why she's here, um, you all have y'alls copy of dates that she's gave you, and I guess the acknowledgement of, if everybody's in favor for these dates, spring break, April 1st through the 5th, Oktoberfest, 18th and 19th of October, summer block party, June 21st through 22nd, and Christmas on the square, December the 14th. I just need the acknowledgement of that so we can secure those dates.
That's a good idea.
Meredith, do you, you got anything you want to say?
I just think it's all been argued the last year, and now that we kind of know what, I know what to expect, we can maybe plan a little bit farther in advance. So if you give the dates, we can go ahead and, I mean, staying, it's gonna be busy because we're going three weekends before Christmas instead of four, so trying to get some of those things nailed down will be a great help.
Well, thank you for being promote, promoting Hartford and all that you've done, and, and thanks for moving in the right direction, I think. Thank you.
She's, she's one of those that's behind the scenes but doing a very wonderful job, and I can't imagine you're job enough, so thank you. All right. All right, Chris, you're backed up.
Let's see, a while back, we had gotten trouble with the state as far as their backwards lagoons down here. They hadn't been neglected for the last 20 years or so and had been building up all the sludge and all the drain valves was broke. We started going, we actually presented to you all about getting it repaired. We got a quote from Luxor's at the time, and what was the price about? Was it 331? $331,000 to clean and repair these lagoons. As of November, they were fully cleaned out, repaired, all the valves are done, and the job ended up coming in a lot cheaper than what was originally quoted. It came at $129,000?
$365,000.
$365,000.
So they done a pretty good job, and if y'all remember that meeting, we was basing that on them, on the lines being either a...
A six or an eight inch. We wasn't for sure about the planes.
Yep.
Ended up being six inch line, and then the job actually didn't take as long as they thought so, so it come in a lot.
So that got us in the clear of taking care of that and no more tickets, so, um, yeah. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Is this coming in of occupational tax also?
Yeah, I would recommend that.
Do we need a motion?
I need a motion to approve.
I make the motion to approve this.
To pay that bill. First and second. You have a question?
So this, we're paying them 129? That's what it, all right, so what about the remainder of the funds that we put on that bid? Will they just...
It'll go back into the, it'll go back into the general account, so it won't go into, yeah, it, we, yeah.
Okay. All right, yep.
Oh, uh, who done first? Mary Bell, did you do the first on?
Yes.
First and second by David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side, motion carries. Thank you, Chris. All right. All over the place, that's what you get for the holidays.
Oh, that's something that's been a long, long...
I didn't lost my sheet. Oh, I got it. Okay, the next one is for this auto diesel station. Uh, this is for our garbage truck.
Is this the new one?
No, this, this is the, this is the older one.
Oh, okay.
Um, we found it very beneficial to run in both trucks, to keep down the time, and, and it's been pretty, pretty good, so... Is there any questions on that one? The total is $13,587. Apparently, it was a pretty big job. So with that being said, I'll ask for a motion to accept.
I make the motion, we accept.
And I guess, and I guess, uh, same thing on occupational?
Yes.
Okay. Have a first and second?
Jerry first, Mary Bell second. Second. I heard you first, so I can...
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side, motion carries. Okay, that's all that I have, and I guess this is for informational that we need to focus on. We're getting to that time where we need to start thinking of projects that we need to go for on our ARPA funds. So if you all have any recommendations, um, either get with me, email me, or whatever. I know that Jeff's worked on some projects for Ellis Park. With that being said, I think March 15th, Jeff is the, um...
What else can be included in these ARPA funds?
So that's Lisa's question. I know, I know a few of the projects. Basically, you know, when I first got on the city council, I made the motion to, uh, give the Boys and Girls Club 10,000. A lot of these projects can be used, something like that, but you can use them on water lines, police cars, equipment. It's just a broadband of what you can use them for. Playground equipment. Yeah, and so we have took some out for bell engineering and the Boys and Girls Club. So we haven't used a whole lot of that fund yet, but the deadline is, is coming up pretty soon, so I don't want to give this money back. So I'm highly recommending that we work on this within the next few months to get a game plan together.
And how much, what are we looking at as far as the balance or how much?
Dollar amount, we have an idea what we're...
Yeah, it's, it's around 652. Grand pot?
652,000.
Oh, my goodness.
And it needs to be committed by December the 31st. So I'm, I tell you what, one thing that I am working on, there's a couple of things that I am working on for sure. Jeff, me and you've talked about a few things in itself, but one of the things that I would like to see is, Chris is going to work on some water projects, and that is something that we really need to focus on as well as some of these projects. So he's going to get us the list of roads that he, he knows that's in dire need, and I think that's important.
Could, so could this money not be used for what's going on out at Country Club Road? If it's a water issue?
I don't think it can go on repair wise. I think it's more lines of, and I might be wrong on that, but I think it, I think it's more of, uh...
New install?
Yeah, new installs and repairs, not repairs, but like purchase of new projects.
We've got a playground equipment.
So we've got that one set, and, and we're waiting on the curbing to put the mulch down. It's taken forever to get. And then I know Jeff's worked on, the committee that he's worked on, and you can explain that when we go to the roundtable discussion. And I know that March 15th is the end of the land and water grants, so if there's any projects, and it don't have to be playground equipment, we can do sidewalk projects, we can do, uh, we can do anything to apply that grant for. So if there's anything that you all, anything that y'all think of, just let us know and, and we'll try to get a project together for these grants.
I mean, are we still, we're still holding, waiting on the May grant, right? To see what is paid for.
I made contact through email with them a couple of weeks ago. It was first of January whenever I reached out, because we hadn't heard anything for several months. And the lady just emailed me back and said that she would be sending out notices at the end of January, and she would be sending them to the city, so I don't know if...
Did they ever meet, because I didn't hear no more about it. Did they ever meet in Frankfurt for like...
I'm assuming...
They have a board that you go to and do a presentation on.
Yeah, we never did get an invite through any of my emails or I don't think seen anything where they invited us.
So with that being said, on the land and water grants, I will say this from prior dealing with those grants, it's always good to put one in play, but they're almost two years back on approving on projects, and sometimes until this one's complete, you won't know anything about this other one for a long time. So that's something to keep in mind as well.
Could we move forward on fencing for Ellis Park?
Yep.
How about the sidewalk going around Ellis Park that we talked about?
Yeah, that's something I think we, I think we can have discussion with that, and we could do that in a, in a special called meeting, um, because we all can't meet together. But we can talk about that topic and focus on that to get things done, because it's, it's important that we get some of these projects going before December 31st.
I got an email from, oh, that's a, that's a AARP Community Challenge Grant.
Yes. Yeah, I think I emailed that to, maybe you, maybe I can't remember, but, and that, that is, like, they do, uh, they do wall arts, I mean, anything that you can think of for beautification, that's one of those projects for those grants.
Okay.
And I, and I don't think anybody in Ohio County has applied for that. So if that's something, Stacey, that you feel comfortable with, get with Meredith, maybe, and, and see if y'all can come up with a project.
Can we go back to like the 1987 mirror down here on the wall? You remember it?
Well, I kind of like the idea about the old picture about...
The 1960s era where it had Hartford.
Yeah. It was red, white, and blue. And see, from my knowledge, Tara told me that we, we basically own that wall, so we can, um, we can do whatever we want right there.
I take over right back to that.
I, I think it's awesome. So if we can find somebody...
I don't think it was 60s, because it was in my lifetime, and 60s predates me.
Oh, here we go.
Okay, okay. I don't, I don't remember when it came down, but it was in the 70s, too.
So if anybody, uh, Stacey and Meredith, if y'all want to get together, I think let's get that going.
Did you forward that to her or do I need...
I think, did I, did I email you that? Oh, it's all right.
Okay, I got it saved. Let me know if you...
Also, you have your City of Hartford employee handbook. Lisa and a lot of people's worked a lot of hours on this. I think she only cussed me out maybe once. So review these.
Once per day.
Yeah, maybe. So review these, and I say we need to get this with Tara. She has a copy. Once everybody goes through and feels comfortable, reach out to me so we can maybe set a date for a special called meeting next month, um, because it's very important. I don't want to, I don't want to set on this and it pass us up, so, and if y'all have any questions on any of it, by all means, call me or Lisa, preferably Lisa. So that's all I have.
I've got a question. Are we still having any problems with the recreational buildings and playgrounds being destroyed?
I think we've got, I don't think we have that much now. I will say on record that we do have cameras set up at different locations, and, and we're, we're trying to do more of a police presence at each location, and I haven't heard a whole lot here lately.
That's good. I hadn't heard anything in a while on this.
I know they've, they've got cameras set up where it'll go right to their phone if they see any activity, so...
That's good.
So that's all I have. And like I said, just get with Lisa if you have any questions on the handbook, and then once everybody feels comfortable, we'll try to set a date for next month for the handbook to get passed. That's all I have for a roundtable discussion. Jeff, do you have anything?
I do. Back in December, whenever Ally Marshall was here, we talked about, she brought, and we talked about trying to find some additional playground for ADA acceptable and things like that. So both of us have looked on the website for, you know, kind of like equipment that we just purchased, and there was really nothing that she felt like that would be, you know, 100% ADA usable. And so then we kind of switched our thinking to... our thinking to maybe adding one or two pieces of equipment, because we already ordered, you know, did the, she did the fundraiser for the swing, and so, I kind of asked her, you know, she has a handicapped child, and what she would think would, you know, benefit, uh, and so, these are some of the things that she picked out, that, you know, she thought would make a good addition to the, to the swing, uh, these are all through Game Time, uh, if you look on the website, those are the prices, I wrote it here in the right-hand corner, of, of what the prices are, and these are just some ideas, uh, just three things that, you know, we, we found, uh, thought would be a, a good fit for the expansion up there at Ellis Park. So, those are just for you guys to look, see what they are, the prices are on there, too.
I think this would be a good purchase myself, and I think that even though it may not be totally 100% ADA, I think we would have more children that may be involved with this than what we think.
We can't vote on that tonight because of a special call meeting, however, um, I will put this on the next month's agenda, and we can discuss it and vote on it then.
Yeah, I remember in December, you asked us-
Yes, no, I, I appreciate you, I appreciate you doing that.
Uh, you know, and, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna put, you know, we're, we're actually gonna have to have sidewalks or something to the equipment, you know, and things like that, for, you know, wheelchair and things like that, too, so, uh, I don't know, that would be another addition, you know, maybe that-
If we're wanting to make sure that we're completely ADA compliant, maybe we need to reach out to like, Wendell Foster, um, they have sensory gardens, they have playgrounds.
Yeah, you know, and a lot of those bigger pieces of equipment, like, we just purchased that is up there, they list those as sensory play equipment, but it, if you really get to look at it, it's not, I don't mean to say it's nothing, but, you know, it's just like hand and eye, you know, type thing, and, and nothing, uh, nothing that they can actually get on and be an activity, other, you know, so, and I, I do actually think some of the things that, that we, the equip, after digging into it and looking at the equipment that we did purchase, those are some of the sensory things that are up there, you know, that falls into that category as well.
I appreciate it, and I'll, I'll make sure that we put this on the agenda for the next month's meeting. All right, thank you, Jeff, for doing that, um, and that's one of these things that we can discuss with our ARPA funds, so, that's, that's a step in the right direction, so thank you. Um, David, do you have anything?
I just like what the judge told us at the meeting over there, uh, and I'd like for y'all to get, look into purchasing some property, uh, on housing, because we need housing here.
Yeah, we are in discussion with a few homeowners here in Hartford, and we're, uh, we, I've talked to PVA over there, Arthur Leach, we're going to try to sit down with some people and see if we can get some people involved where they purchase this property to put living houses in, um, you know, we have the senior living, uh, we need to focus on younger generations trying to come up now, too, so that's important to us, so, that's something that we're going to try to work on this year, um, don't know how far we get, but we're going to have to try something. So thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Stacia, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, thank you.
All right. Jerry, do you have anything?
Just time to make the motion, we adjourn.
I love that man.
I have a complaint against the fellow councilman.
Here we go, on down the line, wait till we get to Tony down there.
I'm taking this chair, I know.
Tony, do you have anything?
We still have a vote for you, you know.
So that's, uh, it's a very valid point, I'm glad you brought that up, um, she has since then, uh, told me yesterday, um, I, I will be, um, advertising for a code enforcement officer, um, so, I know that she's, uh, she's been going through a lot here lately, so, um, I will be advertising that pretty soon. So I'll, I will be setting up interviews after, um, after I guess it goes out into the, uh, paper, so.
We need a big, heavy ex-marine to do that.
Yeah.
I would say something, but I'll keep my mouth shut.
She gave her last name.
I don't know about a marine, but a natural gardener person can handle that.
And I will say that, uh, after this is done, Jeff, uh, I know that you can't, uh, make any decisions on the code enforcement board, um, however, I would like for you to set in that meeting, um, because you have knowledge of it, um, and then, I, once we get this code enforcement officer hired, um, I would like them to set up a meeting, and I would like to see everything revised and set up, um-
To include the fines.
To include the fines as well, and then, uh, we'll have to make a, um, ordinance on that as well, and it had to be passed.
Sure.
Because I remember Tara, Tara telling me that, so, um, and I'll, I'll let you know whenever we get to that point, so.
Sure, okay.
Um, because it, it is an ongoing issue, and, um, it's not always a good topic, but, you know, we want people to come in our community as well. You got anything else, Tony? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion again, that we-
For real, I'll let Jerry make it.
A second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.